Welcome. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amy, would you take roll call, please?
Ms. Talby?
Here.
Mr. Gilbert?
Here.
Mr. Dedzil?
Here.
Mr. Heather?
Here.
Ms. Lattery?
Here.
Our mission statement is the Northwest Local School District will create a responsive learning community where all students are valued, challenged, and guided along a pathway to success. And we need to approve tonight's agenda. We need a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
I put Mark for second. I can't tell because it's...
Oh, we did.
Okay.
Student recognitions?
Okay. All right, so we'll start with academics. Sorry. I was confused about that. Okay. And we'll start with Northwest Local School District would like to recognize 14 juniors at Northwest High School and 23 juniors at Corrine High School who scored advanced performance level on their first district common assessment for American government. What a good time for that, right before the election. Next, we'll go to teachers across the Northwest Local School District are designing engaging learning experiences that allow students to collaborate and discuss academic content. Providing opportunities for students to process rigorous academic content together is a key component of the district's model of instruction. The photos up here show the second grade students at Corrine Elementary working collaboratively to write interesting facts that they learned about writing and calligraphy in Asia's ancient civilizations. Before we get to that one, these photos also show kindergarten students at Pleasant Run Elementary investigating items from nature using microscopes in all five of their senses. This was during a field trip to Glenwood Gardens. Students also completed an obstacle course simulating a fire, and then they also explored a fire truck with the Corrine Fire Department. Students in room 115 and 113 have even adopted a pet cow named Dahlia. She was born on September 9th and lives in Four Pines Farm in Sugar Creek. Our PRAE scholars are already comparing her height and weight as a baby to their own. Students will continue to watch Dahlia grow throughout the entire school year, and will remember this learning experience fondly. Next, we have Corrine High School would like to recognize Senior Leila Klotz for being named as a commended student in the 2025 National Merit Scholarship Program. Leila is one of the top 50,000 students who earned the competition by taking the preliminary SAT National Merit Scholarship qualifying test. This is a very prestigious academic honor. Leila was recently recognized at an all-school pep rally, so congratulations to Leila on that fine achievement. Next, we'll move to fine arts. And Corrine High School would like to recognize Junior Ashley Hyble. Ashley participated in the annual Cincinnati Art Club's plein air competition at Spring Grove Cemetery on 9/21/24. She competed with her on-the-spot artwork and won first prize, which earned her a trophy that is currently on display at Corrine High School. In addition, she was awarded $500 in a full tuition scholarship to either a three- or six-week interlock in visual arts camp next summer. Congratulations, Ashley. Next, we'll move to citizenship. And Houston Early Learning Center would like to recognize 71 pandas who have perfect attendance. HLEC families and staff took the Stay in the Game pledge in September, committing to work together to improve student attendance. Stay in the Game was launched in 2019 by the Cleveland Browns Foundation, the Ohio Department of Education and Workforce, and Harvard's Proving Ground. This program is designed to dramatically improve attendance across Ohio because consistent school attendance, even in preschool, is the foundation for student success. Next, we'll move to Taylor Elementary. And Taylor Elementary would like to recognize 46 Tigers who earned the Trade of the Month Award for September. The trade for September was helpful. The students went above and beyond in their classrooms and all around Taylor's school to earn this award, so congratulations to them. And next, we have Monford Heights Elementary would like to recognize 36 fifth-grade students who applied in interview to become Musketeer Mentors. The students will attend in orientation next week and will begin mentoring shortly thereafter. Musketeer Mentors will be charged with supporting students and staff throughout the school by helping in classrooms and working with their fellow students. This program provides a fantastic opportunity for student leadership and service. Next, we'll go to Pleasant Run Middle School, and they would like to recognize eighth-grade student Taylin Griffith. Taylin is a remarkable young woman who balances both academic excellence and leadership in extracurricular activities. As a scholar, Taylin consistently achieves top marks in all across her subjects. Her dedication to learning and her drive to succeed are evident in the way she approaches every challenge with focus, discipline, and a desire to excel. Beyond the classroom, Taylin chimes as the cheer captain, leading the team with energy, enthusiasm, and responsibility. Taylin serves as a role model for others. She exemplifies excellence and sets a high standard for others to follow. So congratulations to Taylin. And next, we'll go to Struble Elementary. And Struble would like to recognize the 32 students who earned a Blue Jay Breakfast Celebration with their families for being role models and for following the Blue Jay Way. In addition to breakfast, these students also received a special certificate and a T-shirt. And last, we have community service. And Northwest High School would like to recognize the members of their football team who volunteered on Saturday at Frish's Cruising Car Show. Proceeds from the event are designated to local charities. And that's it.
All right. Awesome. Congratulations to all of those students. Thank you. Jim?
Yeah, just one thing. I just wanted to mention that October 17th last week, we had the groundbreaking at the Middletown Airport for the new aviation hangar that we're going to build up there for the kids in the aviation program. And it was well attended by, there was representatives for the governor and the lieutenant governor were there, and then the Butler County Commissioners, who actually gave $7 million to this project. So that was a huge, huge help for that. And then I just wanted to see about if we want to pick a date to go up there to one of the locations for one of the board meetings. I know it's getting kind of late in the year, maybe like in January or February or something like that, if we can do that and just pick one of the spots and then go from there and make a decision on when and where.
When we get the dates for next year's board meetings, we'll see what cross-references with Butler Tech and what their availability is at different sites and have some options for you.
Great. Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, Jim.
Chris, any legislative updates?
Just one thing of interest for the election day, and I guess it's three weeks from tomorrow. Of course, Ohio is still on recess, and then as soon as the election's over, they'll probably declare Thanksgiving and then Christmas recess. Probably won't be back till January. But also bear in mind, like the state of Kentucky, they're only in session two lines, March and April. So we're generally in session about 10 months a year. But watch the election results. They have the same thing on the ballot that Ohio had with, has with the voucher program. The big difference is 90% of the voters in Kentucky are non, they're non-parochial. In Ohio, it's much, much higher. And so with only 10% sending their kids to private Catholic schools, I think you're going to see that thing go way down in Kentucky in a few weeks. But we will not get the numbers on Ohio probably till January. Checked it again today, and it was 150,000 last year. I'd like to see what the increase is. I do like the idea of competition with giving kids the option, but you know, as long as it doesn't get near the tipping point. And we're more going to the private schools versus the public. And that's it.
All right. Thank you.
So for employee organizations tonight, we do have Nate Bellows. He's one of our bus drivers who's here. This actually kicks off Bus Safety Week, so he's here. He's also one of our trainers, so he's one of our onboard instructors who is getting a lot of our new driver and trainings through the process, and he was going to share some bus safety tips for parents and kids about how to be safe on bus for Bus Safety Week.
Thank you.
Like you said, I'm Nathan Bellows, or Nate, depending on what. But we teach, during the training process, we teach most of the safety rules that us as a bus driver can handle. However, there are several safety issues that we can do our best to educate the children, but we can also use the parents and the principals and the administration at schools to really help us out with quite a bit. And one of those is our place of safety. If you don't know what it is for the school bus drivers, when we pull up to a stop, wherever your stop is assigned, typically we select a place of safety is what we would call typically. It's about 20 steps away from the bus, and that is a meeting place for the students. They stand in that spot. They're supposed to be in that spot about five minutes before their scheduled pickup time and wait for the bus there until the bus comes to a full stop. We open our doors, and we, as bus drivers, do a safety check, and then we drop our hands straight down, signaling them it's safe for them to come to the bus. It was a big thing on the left-hand side, and the left-hand side, we have a lot of students that are pretty good at that. But we've noticed an uptick recently in right-side passing, where people will pass the bus on the right side, hop a curb or whatever. As a matter of fact, last year, we have a video of a truck that was trying to stop, couldn't stop, and veered into the yard on the left, and there was a child standing in the driveway. Had that child not been paying attention as well as the bus driver, that could have been very catastrophic for that student. So we're really trying to hammer that, and that's something we need the parents' help with. A lot of parents, especially with winter coming, will have their children inside their vehicles. And while to a parent, the vehicle may seem like a safe spot, and I don't necessarily disagree that the car is safe, but from traveling from their car to either the bus or to their place of safety is where there's an issue. So we want to have them in that place of safety beforehand. That way, as I approach, I can count how many students are there, and that way, as they're loading, I can count, I can count them in my rearview mirror as they're loading the bus, and that way, I don't have a little kid who slipped on the snowbank or whatever it is and gets stuck in the door or different things that may happen. And so that's why we really, we would really love the parents to get involved. Also, when we are dropping off their students, the same thing is in effect. They are to go to their place of safety, wait there until the bus leaves. And I know at the end of a long day for a kindergartner, seeing mom or dad across the street and then just taking off running to mom and dad, to the child, that may seem like something that's just the highlight of their day. But for us as bus drivers, that creates a lot of nervous moments for us as we watch them try to run across the street before we've been able to fully check every direction. So we would love to see the parents step up in that way. And that's kind of our big focus for School Bus Safety Week this week. Any questions?
One thing I was wondering if for next year, if we could have a bus and a driver at each open house for the elementary and middle school to be able to speak to parents and kids. I know we have had it at the back-to-school event, but if we could be there and have you speak to this, to parents and...
I'm all for it. I think we've had, one of the biggest things that we had at the, one of the summer hiring events, we had some of the upper staff show up and drive the bus around the parking lot. And one of them was Mr. Scherz at Taylor, and he asked the same question. He was saying that he really thinks it would be beneficial to have parents at least experience what the driver's experiencing on the bus. So I'm all for it. I don't think you would have a shortage of drivers that would volunteer to show up and talk about that. That is, that's one of the most nerve-wracking parts of the job. I mean, once they get on the bus, it's the safest form of transportation on the roads currently, and so the biggest portion is from them loading and unloading the bus is where we see the most risk for those students, so.
Well, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Nate. Appreciate it.
Thank you. I did not receive any community comments.
For the consent items, we'll start with human resources tonight.
Good evening. We seek approval for the following: five resignations, one retirement, five change in status, eight initial appointments, various supplemental items, leaves of absence, and kisser revised job description and stipend.
We have a few donations for you tonight. The Colrain Boosters donated various things to Corrine High School Athletic Department. Johnson Investments made a monetary donation to the Monford Heights Elementary School, and Ameritas made a monetary donation to Struble Elementary. We have some vendor contracts for choir accompaniment for the Hamilton County ESC Business Advisory Council, Finney Law for expulsion hearings, and SHP for the conversion of central office to preschool.
With that, the superintendent recommends the board approve the consent items as listed.
So moved.
Second.
Jim and Mark, any questions or comments?
Just wanted to mention that Finney is still with us after all that trouble we had 20 years ago, maybe 15 years ago on switching to them. They've been doing our reappraisals, and now the expulsion hearing, and they are a great firm.
Yeah, they've done expulsion hearings for us in the past, so we have a period of time where we're going to need some additional support with that, so they're going to fill in again. And yes, every January, they're on there for the border revisions work.
Yeah, yeah, so glad to see that they're still being used.
One question about, and it might be Amy under your piece about the stipend increase, the kisser.
Yeah.
That goes to, is that our expense or is that?
No, that's funded through... That's funded through the kisser program, and that's funded through Hamilton County Jobs and Family Services.
That's what I thought. Thanks.
Thank you.
First, I'd like to ask the board to dispense with reading of and approve the October 7th meeting minutes that are in the packet, as well as we have our September financial report. Our all funds balance is $112 million. Our general fund unreserved balance is $32 million. Our revenue for the fiscal year to date is $45 million or at 40%, and our expenditures are at $24.8 million or at 23%. And as of September, we're 25% through the year, so we're on target. Our revenue is higher at the beginning of the year because we get our taxes twice a year, so most of our funding comes in July and August and then January and February. Our investment-weighted average return is 4.52%, slowly coming down as rates are being reduced. And our list of monthly bills are our routine monthly bills, as well as we had our annual property insurance. We have some textbooks, some technology supplies, some student and staff software as we're gearing at the beginning of the year. We have the WAMPS curb project, the high school sewer and water line, the Corrine Hill and Corrine Middle building projects that were happening over the summer, and a vestibule at Corrine Middle School, as well as some auxiliary and grant fund payments. So with that, I ask the board to approve the fiscal consent items as listed.
Thanks, Amy. We need a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions for Amy?
Amy, I just have a question. With the investments, where's the primary source where the money goes for investment?
So we use Redtree as our investment advisor, as well as we have Star Ohio. Because Star Ohio follows the Fed rate, so while the rates are very high, we're able to maximize the investment rate of return. But for laddering out like T-bills and things, we use Redtree.
Okay. Is it all insured? Do we have stocks?
We do not have any stocks. We have collateralized, which is insurance through the banking systems, as well as the cost of Star Ohio. But the T-bills and stuff are just backed by the federal government.
I guess...
All based on a higher revised code, which specifies what type of investments we're allowed to do as a public entity.
Okay. So you're not just like, like the Star...
No, I don't get to just pick and choose names.
If I did, we'd be shut down.
No, that's okay.
Pass this right to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a few other items to approve. This is a resolution authorizing the execution of the project agreement with the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission for the new Corrine Elementary. I know it feels redundant that we did a project agreement, but now we have to do the authorization to execute the agreement. So the superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the resolution authorizing the execution of a project agreement with the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission in connection with the construction of a project consisting of certain classroom facilities as part of the Classroom Facilities Assistance Program as listed.
Motion in a second.
So moved. Second.
Any questions?
The next one is in tandem with the one we just did. This one is the resolution authorizing us to earmark the dollars from the maintenance fund, so whenever we're in a program with the state of Ohio, we also have the fund authorized and earmarked with dollars that will go toward the preventative maintenance of the building once it's open, so we can proactively maintain that. So the superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the resolution authorizing the school district to earmark the dollars to the maintenance fund, oh thirty-four, as listed.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Pass this right to zero. Thank you.
And then this one is a resolution to advertise and accept bids for the Weigel renovation to become preschool, because preschool will no longer be able to exist once we build the new elementary on their current site, which is where the new Corrine Hill is going. This allows us to move forward with the acceptance of bids, advertising and accepting bids for the conversion of this building to preschool. So the superintendent recommends the board approve the resolution expressing an intent to advertise and take bids for the Weigel preschool alterations project and authorizing the superintendent and treasurer pursuant to applicable laws to proceed with commencement of such process as need to solicit construction bids.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions?
Daryl, you might have told us, and I'm just not remembering, where's all the central office going to go?
We are currently looking for and working with Corrine Township to find space where we'll be able to relocate some of our central office administration. We've also been working with our central office team to look at how we can downsize our footprint to make sure that we can maximize the space we move into, so we're still locating that space.
You know, across from, I've told you this, across from Joseph Toyota at Compton and Colrain, there's a building just about this size that's totally empty. I believe it's totally empty with the "For Lease" sign on it. I don't know if that's possible.
The "For Lease" sign is for the property in front of that building. The building itself is occupied with a couple of, it has, it has a chiropractor and an investor, or accountant.
I'll be darned.
So we've been, yeah, we've been in contact with the township about trying to identify some, we're touring, we're looking, we don't have a definite place yet, but we're still working through that. So when we get some, when we get closer to having a definitive place, we'll be able to kind of negotiate that and get with the board.
That's where they used to park all the Toyotas before they started only putting two or three of each brand on the, or model on the lot. I thought the whole thing was because it's right in front of the building.
Yeah, it's that outlot.
Yeah, okay. That makes sense.
Have we looked at the schools? Any availability within our schools?
Yeah, we've already started to take some of our staff and put them in schools where there is space.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Not that I'm trying to rewrite curriculum, but when they've remodeled this area here, is there any opportunity for like Donnie Kelly's team of construction kids at Butler Tech where they might be able to help out and actually have some experience actually in their school district on a project?
So we'll have to bid it out to whoever the project goes to. We can always work with them and see if there's anything that they could work with, Donnie, on getting some kids some experience, but it would go through that contractor once we identify one.
I'm not trying to be complicated, but it'd be kind of cool.
Yeah. They did a nice job with the Northwest High School project with the castle.
Yeah, the castle.
Okay. Thank you. Pass this right to zero.
And we have a fiscal item to accept the amended certificate of estimated resources as approved by the Hamilton County Budget Commission for $238 million. That's listed.
Need a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Pass this right to zero. Thank you. Thanks, Amy.
So we have two items on there for information. One is, they're both for next school year, the '25-'26 school year. One is a new high school course for AP Research, and the second is the High School Program of Study. This is the book that outlines all of our courses that we will be offering next school year. Those will be approved in November, and then our counselors would start working with students to start electing their courses for the next school year in December and January to meet our timelines for scheduling and staffing. So I know we just finished the first quarter, and we're already talking about next school year, but we're always in one year and looking to the next. So those are on there now for information, and they'll be back on the November meeting for approval.
Read through the AP Research. That sounded really interesting. I mean, that's how things my daughter is doing in school right now. It's exactly that setup.
Yeah, the courses really do set the kids up for success in their post-secondary realm. Right, so, and then that's just the Program of Study, and the new course is in the Program of Study. And then just a couple of items to update. Next Tuesday, we're going to be doing the State of the District, so this is our annual update to the community about where we are. So we're going to really focus on our ONE Plan and the strategies and data around that. So it'll really give the community an opportunity to really understand not just the goals around the ONE Plan, but the strategies and the monitoring that we're doing to realize those ambitious goals. So that's going to be Tuesday, October 29th. It's going to start at 6:00 PM. This year, it'll be at Corrine High School. We alternate each high school every other year, so this year is Corrine High School. So that will be filmed by Waycross, so if people can't make it, they'll be able to watch it and get all the updates at their leisure. The second thing is, even though the legislator has not been in session lately, the laws that they passed in previously are taking effect. So we do have a new law, Senate Bill 29, that is going to go into effect on October 24th. So parents will be getting a notification about this on the 24th, so just to kind of give everybody a preview... give everybody a preview, this is a new law that went into place around student monitoring of student activity on school-issued devices. So when students are on our devices that we issue them, there is monitoring that takes place when the students are on that. So we have to officially notify families that that kind of monitoring does happen. And then in the summer of next year, we'll have to notify them of all of the different programs that have access to student data. So even our educational, our educational programs with like CKLA are testing software where our teachers can give assessments on the spot and get data on how the students are doing. So that will be coming next summer, but the notice that parents will get on the 24th will just be the mandated notification that the law is going into effect so that they do know that we monitor student activity on student-issued devices that are district-owned. And then part of that will be that if monitoring that we do triggers any kind of concern about student activity, that parents are notified by that. So that parent notification that we already do is codified in this. So that notification's coming out, it will sound impressive, but it's what we're already doing, and we're just notifying people formally because of the new law. So that's gonna come out later this week. I just wanted to be transparent about that, so people know it's coming.
I mean, I get a report every week of what my kids are on, so people, you can sign up for that.
Yeah, and then some of it that is monitored will trigger additional notifications that go to the administrator that they may look into if it's something that is concerning in terms of a search history, and then will notify the families that, hey, your student was searching about this topic and we're concerned, and the counselor met with them. So those are the things where parents will get official notification from us if the student is searching something that is concerning from a safety or perspective.
How many buses did we have canceled last week?
Chris, you have the bus data?
Yes, so the week prior to the last board meeting, we had canceled 20 buses, and then the two weeks in between board meetings, each week was 12.
Okay, so 12 last week.
Correct.
And Susan has an update on the hiring, if you'd like that as well.
Sure, thank you. So we currently have 57 routes, and we have 56 drivers with one impending status. We have four guaranteed subs out of the 10 with three impending status, and out of our seven van driver positions, we have six drivers currently with one impending status.
So last week, we had 57 drivers.
We had one resign.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. That's when you get a... All right, well, thank you for that update. Chris?
Just wanted to, it's kind of, it's something to bounce off of what Daryl said about the law coming into effect. In Ohio, when a law is passed, it doesn't go into effect for 90 days unless it's an emergency law, like if there's some crazy thing that happens, that can go into effect immediately. So anything that comes into effect on October 24th would have been passed on July 24th. That's all I've got.
No comments today?
I got to visit a couple of the schools this week, and I did get to see the CKLA program in action, and it was very impressive, and the kids seemed very engaged in it. And then another one with the collaborative learning, one of their questions that they were gonna discuss amongst each other was should legislative people get to serve for life? Would have loved to have heard their response to that, though we had to move on, but it was a very, very good experience.
I also visited Pleasant Run and doing some of the schools this week, so I enjoyed going into the classrooms. I think it's a great way to see what the kids are doing and see it in action, some of the curriculums that we talked about here. Thank you guys for being here, and Nathan, Nate, for continuing to educate and work on getting people then to drive and getting our kids to school, so appreciate that. That's all.
Great.
And a motion in the second to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Pass this five to zero. Thank you.
[music]